It's like it is seven o'clock.
All right, it is seven o'clock. We will open the meeting. The Village of Pauling Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. You notice we're without our Secretary Vivian tonight, so we're gonna struggle through without Vivian. Okay, we'll do the roll call first. Chairman Michael Q. here. Ken Hardiman here. Board Member Nicholas Forleth.
Here.
And Fred DeVito.
Here.
Here. Okay, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with the approval of minutes from the March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Is everyone reviewed?
Yes.
Minutes, okay.
I have not had a chance to review the minutes.
Okay.
I think we have enough for a quorum.
Okay. Those that have, any questions, alterations?
No.
Anything? No? All right. Would someone make a motion to approve the minutes from March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two?
I approve the minutes from March thirtieth.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes for March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Aye.
Aye?
And I will abstain.
All right, so the minutes are approved. So, next item, we're going to continue with the Hinchin Dairy Eastern Hay matter. And we've had several memos going back and forth about the last meeting. Clarification, questions about the whether it was proper, the service by the town clerk, the village clerk and things. So, would anybody like to make any comments or anything? Jeff?
Sure.
You?
Thanks. Thanks, Michael. Hello, everybody. So...
Could you just?
Jeff Rochelle.
Yes.
And I represent the applicant. What I wanna start off with is, I don't want, I wanna be conciliatory, but I want everybody to know that we received David's latest letter. To us, it only confirms and strengthens our argument that the village clerk was without authority to enforce the zoning code. That being said, and I just wanna make that clear so that it's not seen as any sign of weakness. What we did hear, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, is we heard the complaints, Michael, of Ford. We heard Andy Durkin, right, was upset. And Ken and I talked to Chris immediately the next day and explained to him he had to clean it up. And what I'm happy to show you are pictures, actually Jesse went out today, Jesse Gleason from our office, went out today to the site and took pictures. And after all... This is what this matter is all about. Honestly, the village should rejoice at this point. The eyesore that was the complaint of a lot of citizens of the village has been cleaned up. Because of that, and that's the reason we're here. It's not to, it's not to argue every minor legal detail. It's to clean up the, what is perceived as an eyesore for the village. Even though, for many years, we believed that it was there legally based upon Department of Ag and Markets interpretation of whether we are a farm operation, we feel at this point the prudent thing to do is clean up the site. We've done it. And what I ask for, based upon this, is that this proceeding and that the notice of violation be withdrawn. That as a neighbor, you look at what Chris has done and you should be happy. This is what this is all about. And so with that, I would ask that the violation be withdrawn. You can make it conditioned upon the permanent removal or so that those trailers don't reappear. But I think it'd be strange to prosecute this matter when at this point Chris complied with the request from the village. So, that's really all I wanna say. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Stanger, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. It just pretty much says what Jeff said, which is... You know, there's this whole thing that lawyers do. "I'm smarter than you." "No, no, I'm smarter than you. I found a footnote. Oh, there's a footnote over here. Get to your footnote." That's what we do. We get paid a lot of money for it, too. It's ridiculous, but it's true. But there's a real simple rule, right? So, the simple rule, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And just by way of my little, didn't learn that when I was in law school, so it's common sense. So, there is legislation in front of the village that they will be adopting, as they should, which specifically gives the village secretary, the village clerk, the right to sign the enforcement notice. So, I just wanna bring that fact out, but you know, if you didn't have that, right, there would be no reason to have that litigated, to have that legislation proposed. But in the end, that's all lawyers. It's not neighbors. It's not this village. Now, I sat here, and I never met Mr. Durkin before, but I spoke to him the next day. Yeah, he was right. This thing had to go. That was a mess. And as far as I'm concerned, having not read these papers or feel, I'm not gonna give you any conversation with respect what the interpretation is. I don't know. I just know when I drove in here last, when I first came here, I drove by that place. You know, and I do other things for Chris, but I didn't actually look at it through your eyes or anyone Liz here's eyes until I sat here. And then I heard what Mr. Durkin said. Gotta move on that. Kind of heard what everyone else was saying. You don't wanna listen to lawyers argue about how many angels we have can dance on the head of a pin. You just wanted your village to look better. So, I really frankly didn't care what code said so much as I wished to have this thing look better. Because that seemed to be the heart of the matter, the real issue. So, you know, I, it appears to be resolved. If there's more that needs to be removed, if they can identify it, it is permanent. It's not going to be... We're not bringing these things back. We do have property in Pauling. I'm leaving here to go to that planning board meeting to make a new home completely for our business up there. But to me, you know, isn't that why we were all here? And so what's left? What's left is, you have to interpret the code. That's what he asked you to do. And you can interpret the code, and you could say you're in violation of the code. What's next? Does that mean that one neighbor, we're gonna have Chris Johnson be hauled off to the huskow and face a criminal charge? Or he's gonna be fined so much a day for having conducted his business in a location that he believed was proper until it was shown it was not? What's left? I think where I came out today was because it seems to me there is nothing left, if that's permanent. And your board can say, your board has the power to do a number of things here. You can sit down and write a learned interpretation of this paragraph, and does it apply to this or not? But there's a doctrine that we deal with in being lawyers that always made sense to me. If there was a big fight between two sides over a fact, who's gonna own that house? And then the house burns down. There's no house anymore. The judge will say, you know what? That's moot. The reason for us having this argument doesn't exist anymore. Let's go home. Now, I'm not saying go home, but the reason why we're here is not because of who signed the notice of violation. We're here because of the mess that location was. And we're here because some history prior to the events that brought us here indicated this was acceptable. Now, I've only been here for the last two weeks. So, I don't mean to step on any facts that you may otherwise know, but it's done now. And we can say, you can say, I interpret it's not permitted there, and we don't ever wanna see it back there. But we're done. It's moot. We're not looking at fines. We're not looking at criminal prosecution. Or you can say, we don't even have to reach the interpretation because the reason why we're here, that interpretation, the fact that was to be inserted in your interpretation is gone. And since it's gone, it's moot. The argument's moot. But I wanna make very clear what I said at the beginning. If you were to go to, and I wouldn't, certainly will consult with council to see whether or not you can do these things. I say you can. You also wanna consult with council as to how you might do these things. I won't advise you that. But the one most important thing, I think, from my perspective, is it needs to be permitted. You don't want those back. He shouldn't bring them back. Nobody else, nobody else should ever put them there. And we have three left. Now, I'm going up to the planning board as soon as we're done here. I can, I don't know how long that process up there will take. I'll have a better idea tonight, but we have three left. So, those three, we're still looking for homes for. It's possible or likely that those three, I can move them someplace on that site that faces twenty-two and not the village. I don't know why I don't have homes for those yet, but I did. And honestly, you know what we did was we reached out to people. We reached out to neighbors. We said, we have this problem. Neighbors, some neighbors who had room for it said, sure, bring him over here. So, that's what that's about, right? Neighbors. And so I'm hoping the result of this will be. So, thank you very much for listening to me.
Mr. Gleason, do you have anything you'd like to?
I don't have any comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone on the board have any comments right now? Because if no one does, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consult with our lawyer about our options here.
Purposes of legal advice.
Yeah, for legal advice. That's what he does.
I'll second. I'll make a mo-, did you make the motion or you?
I made, I made the motion.
I'll second the motion. I'm losing count.
That's okay. All right. So, we have a motion before us to go into executive session to consult with our lawyer for legal advice.
You wanna close the hearing for, you wanna close the meeting for that purpose and then reopen it?
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Yeah, like to make a motion to close the meeting so we can go into executive session.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. We will be back as soon as we can.
I always figure when the jury's out, we go to a board. So, he wants to do it.
How long does it take?
The chairman wants to let this, the only person in this room doesn't wanna let go. And the guy with the mask was not nothing done.
Yeah.
When I said, this is what we did. We found neighbors to help us and neighbors helped us, and that's what we did.
'Cause I used to be on the board.
We built a house. We built a house on, like, the lawn in front of the chapel. Which is ridiculous. And politicians had, it was a big PR stock. But it turned out, we built wall sections, right? So, we built a napalm section, a wall with windows or a door, and we built it. And then we stood them all up and just temporarily tackled them together and took a bunch of photos and politicians rolled through. And they took it down and brought it to another community and actually assembling in that. So, we were just there building wall sections. But it was, I think, our company had sponsored it, and you know, they needed some volunteers. So, I went down and at first I got to my work doing, 'cause I'm like, this house is not gonna stay here. And then once they explained that, yeah, yeah, it was a big photo op. I mean, a lot of politicians filmed that were there. Probably poor people taking pictures and doing work.
Was it the first house built for the community?
I don't know why. I mean, there was like Habitat from Rochester was there and, oh, they were, all over the state came in. So, it must've been like, it must've been there pushed the lobby to government or whatever it is, right? Which is interesting. There was so much money granted.
Are you on it for something?
Has been doing well. I've been rebuilding together. Have you heard of that?
Gotta get some variances.
Rebuilding together. So, they...
I feel like I've been on the planning board for the last eleven years for this project.
So, they go in your house and finally their VG, their own climate, their own bathroom, so... The criteria is you have to own your home.
Can't be easier. I'll send you, everybody.
Be eligible and then they come into your project.
We have something similar.
Yeah, so I've been on the board. I wasn't on board for six years. I'm very involved and I still am. So, that's my experience. You show up and you make a big impact, right?
Yeah.
You know, you show up in the morning, like, leave, and they have something, you know, we get a whole kitchen all the time for a family. So, that's like, you see the whole thing through from the start to finish. It was nice. And you do it there at their house with the family there, which is interesting. So, this is a little different. My first time with Habitat where it's like, you're building on a site and you all can see the family and...
My parents started the one. It was Southern Duchess. Then it became Duchess County. And so then I was on board for a while. I did the volunteer coordination for a couple of Blitz builds. We did an all-women's build, and then I did a couple of the Jimmy Carter builds, which were very awesome. One in Kentucky and one in Texas.
Oh, wow.
What's that?
Yeah, um, Texas.
Yeah, that's fine.
Houston in June. Why didn't they do it like February or something?
Houston's, well, summer is so humid, you can't breathe.
Oh, my God, 'cause I never met. So, the company, so the company that sponsored the house I was on, instead of sending the construction guys, they sent the office guys. They dropped, like, within the first couple of hours, they dropped. One of the guys was in the hospital the rest of the week. So, yeah, it was brutal. It was like a hundred and twelve plus the...
Oh, my gosh.
It's just, and what was even worse was they took us on a school bus to go to a school to get lunch. And you went into the school and it was cranking AC.
Yeah, it's like a chill at lunch.
And they, and they fed us like stew, hot stew. And then you got back on the hot bus and drove back to the sun.
Outside, yeah.
It was brutal, but it was a great experience to work next to the homeowners, you know? You get to know the whole family.
Well, that's what they're saying. They said it's different per, per, what do you call it, sector or section, but, you know, somewhere between a hundred and three hundred hours of volunteer work required by the homeowners, perhaps that? So, I don't know whether that's working on the house or other things or...
They can even start before their house. Once they're accepted, they could start. But it's changed since I did it, but it can be making phone calls. It can be all sorts of stuff, especially if their ability is not there to do. But then somebody from family and stuff does construction or it's just sun site, handing out water if need or something.
And they said Habitat will like send you around, so like they'll do builds all over the world. And you can like, and you say you'd like to go, they'll like put you up and you can go build a house. Anyway, which is interesting, it's like, seems more efficient to have it at a local. Yeah, yeah. That was my thought. Like, how much money are you guys making if you're sending people all over to build?
Yeah, 'cause I almost went to the Philippines, but it was a lot of money to go on, so... What a great experience. Did it for quite a few years.
Yeah, puts things in perspective.
Yeah, it does.
Problem become relative when you see how some people live.
Yeah. Yeah. Where I was in Kentucky was, you know, the Appalachian, you know, this. And while we were there doing that build, the Jimmy Carter Project build, there was a group of us that went off-site. Like someone had a whole roof with their trailer. We went and helped that. Something that, we did that through the church, too, and went down to Kentucky to the Appalachians. We went down and did the same thing, fixed up somebody's, you know, the building.
Yeah, they started through church businesses. And I know the one that I was a part of was a local church founded it and they, that was their thing, to help the elderly stay. They would come safely by in their own homes. That would be a reasonable thing to do.
But you never know.
But there's so much money available for... Like, we, first time we were there, a bunch of it was two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We had three years and primarily donations. And when I got off the board, it was two point three million. It was... So, we'd all grant one estate that we could spend. And you got ten percent administration, this was our moral, was that?
Do you have an iPhone? Oh, 'cause I would be able to give it to you by keeping your card and scanning it.
They have a hard time, we didn't know, they have a hard time finding people I do. It was like a three-year grant.
It's perfect command.
Ten new homes in the first year.
Open the camera. Just open the camera.
How does it look right there?
Yeah, it's the same scene. Sorry.
It came out good, right?
And so, one of the guys, I didn't have the skill set, you know, building new front step form. I went washing his windows, and he sat there and played the harmonica for me and put, and then put a record on the floor while I was sitting there.
But I give it myself a reading, but you could just save it on the phone. But then she would pull up on contact.
So, that was one thing that I thought I'd do.
Better you take a picture and back it up.
I think it would every year as a company. You have to find stuff like that to do, like a lot of times just raking or cleaning up.
Yeah, yeah. I went to another house. I did the round.
What's that? I never, I've never had a drink from the bed.
Yeah, no, we do it every year, like, all these are such.
Ever since I've been around this. Yeah, eighty-nine, thirty years, over thirty years, I think.
I have, yeah.
You have to tell, you have to tell. Yeah, probably. I would think. Yeah, that was true. You're looking through things. If you're trying to find something, you might.
We tweak things and get a hold of people and say, okay, we're moving this up or moving that back. It was a lot, but we got it done.
My name is Sean.
Don't you guys use?
Thank you.
So, there's some things that we paid for, there's things that, you know, they were donated.
Very good.
Some parts, you know, you had to buy. So, basically, you know, say you had to pay for the parts, but they donate to the like.
For sure. Tremendous work.
I had to.
I have it in on Wednesday around eleven AM.
I had to be in by quarter after eight.
Okay, I'll put it down. I'll say call ahead.
All right, now, I'm running out of steam.
I should take you more than fifteen, twenty.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'd look around and see what's going on. A nice long weekend to get, sounds good.
I came to them about ten years ago, and they've been good, but they're starting to peel, I'm saying.
Gotcha.
They need to be, just have the roof put out.
There you go.
So, you know, it's time to do that.
Perfect. No, thank you.
I know. We may need them for something else. I just looked at the diet of the shrimp. I didn't, you know, interact with them, yeah.
I certainly got free time, so I can do these damn building projects, so. Sitting around twiddling my thumbs.
See what church do for you?
That's it? Exactly, exactly. That's why we have vans that are all leathered up. I get calls all the time. That's why we have vans that are all lettered up, I get calls all the time, but just.
A letter.
Yeah.
Yes.
All we can, but pinstriping.
Oh my god.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice, breeze blowing.
See who left, and I actually ended up doing something.
Yes, I've had time jet for a while.
It's challenging, there's like three techs.
That's like that.
Cause we'll get a call if you need it. Like when I go to Westchester, I stay on the highway all the way, I'll get three hours of call done.
You know, I mean, not in.
I come in this way, and I know where they are now.
I always have two or three spots.
Um.
Yeah, I got a twenty minutes call and.
Once I get out of my bed, I'm ready to go back.
And it goes so quick, they have three bars all in this one.
Yeah. My phone always used to be up there, that's why.
You can move them.
I know, but I try to trouble. They don't always seem trouble. Thank you. Which.
Paige might have her phone number listed on Facebook, cause she sells that stuff, you know. But they're gonna be here, they're gonna be here, they're not, they're not, you know, what are you gonna sign? It just. I want that, nothing. I don't need it, what do I need? They're gonna do identify me here.
Yes, your phone, it's up, it'll be good.
Throw me out, I don't care.
Better golf courses, but California might, just because the cachet of Pebble and Cypress and, um, you know, might, might take the, take the trophy.
And down in San Diego, too, there's a couple, right? There are a couple there.
Yeah.
I don't golf, but I've been to a lot of those courses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too late.
I mean Pebble Beach, right? I mean, it's, I don't think there's anything.
Short of the Grand Canyon. I mean, when I went to Grand Canyon, it was unbelievable.
Okay.
The coast of Pebble Beach.
Yeah.
Like standing on those pools with the ocean.
It's, it's about as beautiful as there is in America.
Yeah, it's absolutely gorgeous.
Yeah.
I, so I, yeah, like we played a lot of nice courses out there, but I looked at my phone, I think I took like a hundred and fifty pictures, pictures while playing Pebble. I was like, how can they golf? Like every minute you turn around, you're like, oh my god, look at that view.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not that, it's, I mean, the, other than the layout, like it's not a hard course.
Okay.
Special course, like the course itself is, I mean, that was in Tulsa, no one ever played it. But you put it on the edge of the ocean, man, it's like the
Right.
Number one destination spot for golfers.
Yeah, it's true. People love water.
Until the thirty mile an hour winds blowing off.
Yeah, yeah.
Have no chance of anywhere you want to.
Must be quite a bit of deliberation up there.
What's that?
Must be quite a bit of deliberation up there.
Yeah.
How long has it been? Twenty minutes?
Didn't get her. Not even sure, that's a great person.
Who can drive?
She'll go and give you the number, but I didn't get a, uh, I didn't see the numbers, just gave me the number. Then nobody answered.
Well, I don't know, Carrie, I know Carrie must have her phone number, too.
I'm not sure, she called us.
Maybe they don't answer like we do, in case they, if you don't know. Should have had Joe call. See, we're using the two or three numbers, so they don't understand that, that's the problem.
Don't be joking.
Yeah, but they would recognize the phone, if they talked to them on the phone, they've got this phone, it's registered. You know, like Joe's phone is registered with us and. Call him back and have him call. Well, I'm telling you, call Carrie.
The message you told her, you know, you call me back.
They're not gonna answer. They're gonna call like us, when we get their messages. You end the week.
Oh, she sells stuff. Go forward, so.
I don't know, you told me, I, I didn't know. I didn't see.
Fresh ones that you had sent here.
Send you, right?
They might have gone through right before you, you already got here. This is not the first one since I've been sent here.
Yeah.
Usually they pack the place. Usually they would announce it again. I think usually. Yes, but they said, okay, usually have the identity. Well. What else we doing? Watching stupid television?
Stuck outside.
How hard is it? All right, we're back. Thank you for your patience. All right, so after discussion with our attorney, we're going to discuss this among ourselves and, uh, see where we, we all stand on this. Uh, I think maybe the first item we should talk about is about the village clerk.
Mm-hmm.
And the village clerk, uh, having the authority to, uh, do what she did with the, uh, with the, serving the document. Anybody have anything to say about that?
Uh, I, I do, Michael. Um, I don't have the page in front of me now, but I was looking at some of the notes from, uh, Jonathan Bardavid from a while back, and some of the interpretation. Uh, and I, it appears that there is going to be some language rewritten, uh, in the future, perhaps to make this even more clear. Uh, my personal opinion is that, uh, and this is discussing one of the, one of the, uh, points that, uh, that our applicant has made. They thought that the, that the clerk didn't have the expertise. And I agree that the clerk doesn't have the expertise to determine if there are violations. However, I feel very strongly that the clerk has the expertise to determine that Chazen and Companies, who is hired by us to determine if there are violations and if the code is being, uh, operated within properly. I think that she certainly has the expertise to realize that the expert that we hire can make those determinations. And she is there to sign it as a representative of the village. Uh, without that possibility, then there is no ability for any violation to be sent out to anyone and be enforced. And clearly, that is not the intent of the language in any way. Whether or not there may be a different interpretation of the words, I think that in order for this process to work appropriately, that has to be allowed as part of the process.
Thank you, Nicholas. Uh, Fred, Dan?
You know, I agree, it's interpreted that way, and that's the way I interpret it myself.
And? All right. Uh, there's also the matter of the time bar. Uh, if an objection to this was going to be, uh, filed or registered, it had to be done within the sixty days, sixty day time limit, and it wasn't. So that kind of throws it out right there.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's one point.
Mm-hmm.
We need to take a vote on that, how we feel?
You can do, you can do it one at a time, or you can, you can wait until you have it all done and if you feel like you've got consensus, you can take it all at once.
Uh, the next item was, uh, whether or not the property on East Main Street is an agricultural, uh, enterprise. Agriculture going on there. And, you know, we've looked at the code, we have, we looked at our code and, which does mention agriculture, but, uh, what, what's going on there doesn't fit what our code says is agriculture. We have the letters, uh, the decision from Ag and Markets that says they're not agriculture.
Right, from the state agency.
Right, from the state.
That's farm operation.
Yes, it's, it's not, it's not a farm operation. It's not, uh, there's no, you know, crops being produced there. Uh, there are no animals, cows, horses, pigs, chickens, nothing like that. The whole operation, what's going on there, is really more like, uh, tractor supply, agway.
It's a retail.
Something like that. Uh, to me, I mean, that's, that's what it is. And, uh, the code says that if you have a business, I mean, things have to be enclosed in a building unless it's, ruled as agriculture. Well, everything is outside there. There's some things inside, but many things are outside. And that doesn't work under our code. It's not supposed to be displayed that way. Uh, that, that, anybody else? Anybody on the board of anything?
I, I'm in agreement with you there too, Michael. I'm, I'm looking at, at this determination by the New York State Department of Agricultural Markets. And they determined that this property was not a farm operation. And in certain instances, I could see that perhaps a village might disagree with the state. We might have more contextual information or history about the use of the property, and we may have a disagreement. But in this case, there isn't anything grown there. Um, and I don't happen to feel that I have any disagreement with the state, uh, the state's, uh, department based on, on that evaluation. I feel the same way. Uh, I don't, I don't see this as a farm operation, and I don't see that there's agricultural use going on there. As you said, there are no livestock, there's nothing being grown there. It is an area where things are collected and resold mostly, uh, as, as a resale operation.
One of the, one of the things that Ag and Markets, um, mentioned as, as one of their factors was the fact that, uh, their findings, that the majority of the products were acquired from purchase agreements as opposed to being grown on land owned or
Right.
rented by, you may want to just touch on that.
Mm-hmm. All right, uh, yeah, it's.
Uh, I think we did kind of mention that, the resale, that they're, that.
They buy from somebody else and they're a reseller.
If it was grown, if they, if it was all grown on their property or rented property, they could resell it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the distinction.
It's not.
Okay.
Anything else? I mean, it's, it's not an agricultural use under the, you know, commonly, uh, commonly understood meaning of, of agriculture. Uh, it's, 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 uh, it's a retail use. It's, it's not. I mean, agriculture, is agriculture down the line, but by somebody else. It's not agriculture by eastern hay or inch it. That's, that's not agriculture there.
And of course, one of the things that, that, uh, not having an agricultural, uh, interpretation would mean is that the buildings there also would have to go through regular zoning approvals and planning board operations as well, where if it is not, in, it's not categorized that way, then it doesn't fall under those same, uh, controls that the rest of the village has for zoning and planning.
Good point. Anything else? So, uh, I guess we can resolve this tonight, we can take a vote on this, how we feel about it, and, uh.
Should we separate the votes, uh, into two different points, or?
What do you think, David? Should we separate? They're just.
I think it might be more clear that way.
All right, fine. Sure, it's clear. Yeah. All right, so, uh, the first one, the village clerk having the authority to issue the, uh, the letter.
Yeah, I'll second the motion to, that she has the authority to issue, sign, or serve, deliver, whatever.
Yes. All right. Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the, all right, the second point is, is this an agricultural operation? Under the commonly understood meaning of the term.
Or a farm operation.
Or a farm, agricultural farm operation. Yes.
I, I make a motion, Michael, that the village board agrees with the state's assessment that this is neither a farm operation nor is it an agricultural use going on at that property.
I'll second it.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. David, you're drafting up some
Yes.
Information of, all right, great.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Good luck with the, uh, town.
Yeah, I guess I'm gonna need it.
And honestly.
Maybe I can bring you up as a character witness.
Thank you very much for the cleaning up of that property. It is very much appreciated.
Yes. You know, thank you for recognizing it.
Yes.
None of us were here to try and sneak something by you.
Right.
It was a mess, needed to be cleaned up. So, appreciate the fact.
It did. Definitely, it definitely did. We, we still felt that there was a need to rule on some of these decisions so that it was clear moving forward for any and all others who may have
All right.
similar intentions and situations.
I fully understand that. I will, if you, if you're, I'd like to be able to pass that along to my client as a thank you from you to Anne.
Most certainly.
Because I didn't do it, I'm just the lawyer.
Just the lawyer.
Most certainly. Thank you very much, Kenneth.
Okay. All right, so that, that finishes Inch and Dairy, Eastern Hay. Next item is Five Oak Street.
Can I just stand up here?
Yes.
Probably not, no. You guys all have copies of this? Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I apologize, the, uh, our architect, Kurt, is away on vacation, uh, this week. Um, so he wasn't here, but I'm pretty familiar with the ins and outs that we went over as far as the zoning variances that we're asking for as a zoning board for this project. Um, I have a letter from, I believe you, uh, the board also received from the, uh, village planner documenting, uh, each one of the variances that we're asking for, um, with descriptions of what that all means. So I'd be happy to go through any of that with you, um, on how you go up the receipt.
Yeah, good, well, first, could you just give us a, for everybody knows what's going on on the rundown of what's happening?
Yep, absolutely. So, the property is located on Five Oak Street, uh, on the other side of the village, kind of like a post office.
Yeah, kind of the back corner of Dutcher, the Dutcher house there.
Exactly, it's the Dutcher house. So this is, it's a corner lot, uh, located on Arch and Oak. Uh, the streets change right as it hits the slot. It's currently a one-story, uh, one unit building. Excuse me, determined as mixed-use building, so by village code, it could be residential or commercial if it fit the certain criteria based on where it is. Uh, what we're proposing to do is an addition on the current building, not a full demolition, an addition and complete renovation of the building, um, to, again, achieve that mixed-use status. And I have commercial space on the first floor, um, and other residential units as well. Um, so there'll be a mixture of, most of the units right now are laid out as one-bedroom units. Uh, there may be one studio, depending on square footage. But the total, total, um, breakdown is five apartments, dwellings, and one, uh, commercial space. The interesting thing about this property is because it's, it's kind of unique, being on a corner of the village, it fits, which hence a lot of the variances that we're talking about, it fits on, it has two front, uh, fronts.
So setback situations are complicated.
Exactly, and that's exactly why, why I'm here for, uh, in front of you folks. And with the way the building currently, um, sits, we're basically keeping it the same type of layout, just expanding it. So right now, I don't know if you're familiar with it, there's a large parking lot, um, that will fit five cars, you know, stacked left and right. But there, it's almost tandem depth, so you could pull one car in and pull another one in. Now, obviously, that doesn't count for ten parking spaces. So we're, we're, we're proposing to extend the, extend the building out into the existing parking lot, but still maintaining those five parking spots. Um, so you kind of see it on the, on the plan there where you see. So where the parking spots are on that plan, they are currently there now. So they're not adding things, changing things like that.
It's just going to be closer to the road.
Exactly. The, the building will, in terms, become more conforming, but not fully conforming to the code. Because we're getting closer to the property line, but not all the way. And, uh, and again, being a corner lot and a tight lot, that's kind of, that's the real problem, why we're here. So that's kind of the overview of it.
All right. Uh, and also, there was the matter of the parking, uh, for the people that work there.
Right, so, yeah, that's an issue that we discussed at, I don't know if we were going to get a big horn. Um, that was an issue that we discussed with the planning board. Um, that the planning board, I'm pretty sure, and I think they've, uh, was there the other day, that they determined that we have enough parking for the residential spots. And next meeting, I think they're going to make their determination, is if they're going to make any stipulation as far as my commercial use there. Uh, but what my proposal to them was that the, the building sits right on the corner. On Arch Street, that whole row of parking on, or the whole road is all merchant parking, designated by the village for merchant use only. So I propose that my, the five spots that I propose is for the residential apartments in any of the.
So they're going to be permitted only to people who are residents of the apartments?
Of the, of the, of the apartments. So if you owned a shoe shop or something in there, you would park in the merchant parking, um, not in front of the store, which alleviate the burden of, of extra parking problems over there. And one of the planning board members is the, also a parking enforcement officer. And at the planning board meeting, he kind of reaffirmed that that side of the village doesn't have a major congestion issue with parking. And he attested that.
No, especially that end of it.
Correct. And he attested that that side, the merchant park is often open and vacant and not used, based on his own experience, so. So that doesn't, that's not part of the specific variance that I'm asking for, but that does give a good backstory on what is going on.
With the planning.
Sure. Okay, all right. Uh, why don't we run over the variance criteria, the questions and responses, and I'll put these out.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll see if you want to.
Oh, yeah, I'm good here.
Okay, all right. Uh, so the variance criteria, there are five questions with the area variance. Number one, that the granting of the variance will not result in the undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The answer given is, the existing site is developed with a one-story commercial building with onsite parking along the Arch Street frontage. This building was constructed prior to the current village appalling zoning regulations, including the urban regulations. Properties in the vicinity of, of the subject properties are a mix of commercial and residential multifamily. Properties in the vicinity of, of the subject properties are a mix of commercial and residential multifamily use. The proposed construction will bring the site more in conformance with the urban regulations and also enhance the mixed-use, commercial and residential, character of the B-one zone. Number two, criteria number two, the benefit sought cannot be achieved by some other feasible method. The site is a small corner lot, Arch and Oak Streets, which presents unique challenges for strict compliance with the zoning regulations, especially in terms of building and parking placement. The proposed redevelopment of the site will make the property more economically viable and enhance the mixed-use character of the neighborhood. Number three is the variance substantial. Although the overall variances may be considered substantial, the redevelopment of the site will bring the building and parking more in compliance with the intent of the urban regulations as they apply to the B-one zone district. The proposed site uses, site use will help continue the viability of the village appalling downtown area. Number four, will there be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The site is currently developed. The proposed redevelopment will have a building constructed to current building code standards as well as more defined site enhancements such as defined, uh, parking areas and landscaping. The proposed development is in keeping with the existing character of the neighborhood. Number five, was the difficulty self-created? The size of the site and the two-street frontages present unique challenges in creating a site development is strict, uh, in strict conformance. Yeah, in strict conformance with the zoning code slash urban regulations. The current site owner needs to create an economically viable, uh, development on the site. The inclusion of much-needed apartment units on the site will help satisfy the deficit of housing opportunities as well as, uh, as well as aid in the viability of the onsite and offsite commercial units in the area. Do you have anything you wanna add to that or?
No, I think that's summed up all those specific questions.
Okay. Um, anybody on the board have any questions about this or statements or anything you'd like to make?
How close is the back of the building gonna be to the adjacent, adjacent building? Back of the building to the adjacent building? Survey. It sits pretty close now. Um...
It looks like there's only a few inches.
Yeah, he, he doesn't show the exact measurement on here. That, that front-left corner of the building, right there, shows it's basically on that property line. We're not obviously going any farther there. The main, um, extension of it, this is the existing survey, the main extension is going that way towards Arch Street. So, it's just extending this way. Yes, proposed addition. It's not going that way.
But you're not moving the back line of the structure forward, are you?
No.
It's gonna stay right, that corner is gonna stay where it is?
Correct, correct. There's on the, the side where you see con, um, where the garbage cans are proposed, that has to change a little bit because there's currently steps and concrete and doors and stuff. But the, but going backwards, no, it's not. Ninety-five percent of the addition is going that way.
Okay. You don't happen to have any drawings yet of the proposed building, do you?
Uh, I believe it's on the second page of that. Do you have two pages?
No.
No, I'll just, uh, we just got the site.
Yeah, maybe you could step forward and let us see your page two.
Cut slack in order here. You've set me up in failure here, I think. So, the, the idea of, you folks can have this here. I should be first, we'll be first. The idea behind designing this was to imitate or replicate a similar, um, architectural look as the building right next to it, that we did two years ago at Seven Oak Street. So, we're gonna keep the same type of roof lines, same type of roof pitch. Um, we're gonna, we propose the brick facade about approximately three to four feet up, uh, on the front and the side. Uh, it would be a medium gray vinyl siding, exactly the same, probably exactly the same as Seven Oak Street, with a charcoal-to-black asphalt shingle. The height of the overall building would approximately, give or take, two feet taller than the one next to it. Nowhere near the height of, uh, you know, the Dutcher House or any of these larger structures, and you guys can have this if you'd like. I thought he included this. And see if he gives a layout of some of the floor plan as well. So, we're nowhere near any kind of height restrictions at all. Again, it's only a two-story building. We could even flatten, you know, if it was an issue, we could even flatten and bring the height down, but it would flatten the roof pitch, it kind of throw the look off. So, to keep that same type of look, to make that corner kind of a cohesive look is what our goal was. That's why we came up with this look.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, now, I'm just, you know-
I was gonna say, just perhaps, Sean, at some point, you could, you could make sure that there are enough copies of this for the rest of the board to have our own just to refer to?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I, it's under the assumption that when we submitted it, we came-
Yeah, somehow we didn't get page two, but I'd love to have a copy of it to look at and-
For sure. You get it digitally, and I know Vivian has a copy, but she's not here as well, so I'll make sure you, you guys get it.
All right, now, just reading, we, our planner couldn't be here either, Karen, but she did submit, uh, her analysis, and one of the things she says, next step. Next steps, the zoning board should consider the various criteria, must wait until the secret determination to make a decision. So, we can't-
And the planning board is the leading, leading, or leading board on this, so they're gonna have to make an environmental evaluation.
Yeah, we can talk about this and things, but we can't render a decision tonight.
Yes, yeah, that I've been, I was, that was explained to me as well.
Okay, good.
My understanding is our next-
So, we all understand, all right.
Yeah, my next, our next planning board meeting, I think they're close to making that secret determination.
Okay, which will be early, early June.
June fourteenth, I believe, which is also a public hearing.
So, then maybe we can get back on the schedule for our June meeting.
I certainly hope so.
Right, all right. Uh, now, we can run over the comments that Karen made, and, uh, I think the only other thing we can do and talk about that. Does everybody have that? Well-
This is the one that says LaBella?
Yeah, LaBella, yeah.
Trying to come up with a little program.
Yeah, you see it.
Yep. Okay, you have that, Anne?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if we have to read this whole thing, but parking location, which is governed under the urban regulations, uh, you know. So, does anybody have any questions or anything on that? The area variance criteria will, variance result in an undesirable change in the character or detriment to nearby properties. And Karen says, under the prior use of the site as an office, parking had been located within, uh, the front yard along Arch Street. Proposed area variance requests for parking to continue to be located in this area under, under improved conditions. That is, site improvements to delineate parking and landscaping. Currently, there are approximately five spaces and five proposed. Parking is currently located in the front yard, therefore, the continuation of parking here is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Can the benefit be sought by other feasible method? No. To provide alternative locations, the entire site plan would have to be reconsidered, uh, with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Due to the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking spaces in the rear. Yeah, you don't wanna create something that's too complicated.
It would be virtually impossible to have any kind of addition on the building, even with parking yard, just on the layout area. The space you need for a driveway and parking spaces, it wouldn't be possible.
So, then it's the variance substantial. Variance is not anticipated to be substantial, given the existing conditions. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions? Parking is currently located in the front yard, therefore, is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical conditions in the neighborhood or district. Was it self-created? Yes, the difficulty is self-created, but there was a pre-existing condition. Okay. Then there's lot coverage. According to Schedule C, a maximum lot coverage of seventy-five percent is permitted. The applicant is requesting a lot coverage of eighty-five percent. So, uh, area variance criteria, will variance result in an undesirable change to the character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? The increase in lot coverage will be accompanied by improved landscaping and an improved building facade. Given that the project uses, uh, the existing footprint with some expansion, the proposed development is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. No, I think it's gonna improve the nearby properties.
Thank you.
Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? Yes, the applicant could rebuild the existing building with no expansion, but what would be the point of that? Is the variance substantial? The applicant is requesting an increase of ten percent from the maximum lot coverage permitted. The requested variance is largely driven by the increase in the building's footprint from the existing fourteen-hundred-and-forty square feet to two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy, or an increase of ninety-two percent. Given the building increase, this may be considered substantial. The, uh, will there be an adverse impact, or effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The proposed variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district because of the densely developed nature of the area. Yeah, it's right in the center of the village, so it's-
The, uh, the interesting thing about the, the lot coverage variance that we're asked before is that the, the addition of the building is actually getting added on to already, um, impermeable surface, which is blacktop.
Right.
What's pushing us over that ten percent is to try to meet the zoning code of going out to the zero lot line.
Right.
So, we have to extend a little bit out to the Oak Street, which is, which is where you see on the designs with that overhang.
That's that covered area?
Exactly. Making that covered area makes us follow the code or-
And that covered area is part of the second story?
First, uh, comes off the second story for the commercial space. So, if you were at, you know, walking into the storefront, you'd be under a coverage.
Okay.
So, it's by adding that, we meet the code to get to the lot line, but now we jam up and go ten percent over, so.
Right, right, right. And of course, you don't wanna have the first floor go out that far, then you lose all that parking, if you try to meet the code by having setbacks on the curb.
Going, exactly. Yeah, exactly. We go to zero parking, so.
So, it's kind of a give and take there.
Exactly.
And the other side, I guess, is your entrance for your basement.
Um, the entrance from the basement will be inside the, um, inside the, the first floor area. The, the, he shows on there the plan as a, for to go out by garbages, and he put an emergency type-
Which that's almost impossible there.
Yeah, it's probably, this doorway may not even happen, but, um, but this will be the main entrance for commercial and then the second entrance.
Is here.
So, it's this little piece right here that's, that's pushing us over.
Okay. All right. Uh, let me keep going here. Required minimum setbacks on front, Arch Street, urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type-one shopfront slash mixed-use building diagrams, building setbacks are not permitted in the front yard. Area variance criteria. Will the variance result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? Proposed development will improve the site's compliance with this requirement from the existing condition. As such, is not anticipated to result in undesirable change in character of the neighborhood. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? To provide alternate, alternative locations, the entire site plan would need to be reconsidered with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Given the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking spaces in the rear. Is it substantial? Variance is not anticipated to be substantial, given the improvement to the existing condition. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? This variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions, given the improvement to existing conditions. Was it self-created? Yes, but it's improvement. Required minimum frontage, uh, build-out on Oak Street, urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type-one shopfront slash mixed-use buildings diagram, a minimum of ninety percent frontage build-out is required. The applicant is providing fifty-two percent. Area variance criteria, will variance result in undesirable change in the character? Uh, the proposed development will improve the site's compliance with this requirement from the existing condition. As such, is not anticipated to result in undesirable change. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? To provide alternative locations, the entire site plan would need to be reconsidered. It's pretty much the same answer we just had before. Is it substantial? Not anticipated to be substantial. Uh, will there be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions? Variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse effect or impact, given the improvement. Was it self-created? Yes, but it's improvement. Required minimum frontage build-out on Oak Street, urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type-one shopfront slash mixed-use buildings diagram, a minimum of ninety percent frontage build-out is required. The applicant proposes zero percent. Area variance criteria. Will the variance result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties? Proposed development will not increase the site's existing nonconformance with this requirement. As such, it is not anticipated to result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? Provide alternative locations, the site plan would need to be reconsidered, and with the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Due to the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, it may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking places in the rear. Is it substantial? Yes, but it's not anticipated to be, the variance is not anticipated to be substantial, given existing conditions. Will there be an adverse impact or effect, physical or environmental? This variance is not anticipated to result in an adverse impact, uh, on, on physical or environmental conditions, given the improvement to the existing conditions, yes. Uh, was the difficulty self-created? Yes, but it's, it's the other ones, it's not increasing the nonconformity from the existing conditions. And then we have garden wall, under urban regulations. According to the urban regulations, type-one shopfront slash mixed-use buildings diagram, garden walls shall be built on frontage properties in the absence of building walls. The applicant proposes no garden wall on Arch Street. Area variance criteria, will variance result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? The proposed development will not increase the site's existing nonconformance with the requirement. As such, is not anticipated to result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Can the benefit be sought by some other feasible method? To provide the garden wall on the Arch Street frontage of the property, the entire site plan would need to be reconsidered. With the location of the proposed reconstructed building in a significantly different location. Due to the size of the property and the proposed building footprint, may be difficult to locate a driveway and five parking spaces in the rear. Is it substantial? It's not anticipated to be substantial. Will there be an adverse impact, uh, effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The variance is not anticipated to result in adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions, given the improvement to exist, the existing condition. Was it self-created? Yes, but it's not increasing the nonconformity. Okay, wow, that's it. Uh, so-
The only one, the one with, excuse me, the only thing to note is the number four, the build-out to Oak Street, I think it was a typo, it was supposed to be built out to Arch Street. Those are two streets. That's the one that's going to zero percent, and that's just because it's a parking front.
Yeah. Sean, can you remember where the garden wall is? I was just looking at this one drawing and didn't happen to see it.
There isn't a garden wall.
There is no garden wall. It's supposed to be, but there isn't.
Right. The urban regulations say, if we can't go to the property, then we have to build a wall, freestanding, which would block our parking, so. Hard to get a car around a wall on their side.
I saw some of the landscaping there, and I was thinking that maybe there was gonna be, I misunderstood the, uh-
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean, as with, with many, uh, building sites, uh, plots in the village, I mean, it's an old village that... The layout of lots and things is very, you know, it, it's old. It's, it's- It's, uh, you know, people, the lots are small, and it's very difficult.
And the properties are already non-conforming in so many cases.
Right. And, uh, so, what we're getting, we're, we're getting is, it was mentioned several times in here, there are improvements. You know, you're, you're getting a new building, it's an improved building. That building, you know, I've been going around that corner countless years, and, uh, it, it's, it may have been a nice building when it was built, but it really needs help. The building next to it has been improved, uh, by Sean, and-
Thank you.
Uh, welcome, and, uh, so, th- now, it's, I think, a, you know, good thing to, uh, look at improving this building, which, uh, is, what, nobody's actually, there's what, uh, was there a beauty parlor? Is, is somebody in there?
No, there wasn't a dentist, there was a dentist for many years, and, uh, now, there's currently a hair salon.
Hair salon, right, right.
Yeah, but it's kind of a temporary tenant until this, this project was supposed to go through this process about two years ago or so. But the water, water restrictions in the village kind of put everything to a halt. So, now, that's kind of why we're picking up now. But the building is in definite need of repair. I think, as I told you on Saturday, the roof has suffered major fire damage countless years ago. So, it needs, definitely needs to repair, so that's what we're looking to do.
Okay, yeah, it will, uh, definitely improve that corner. It's already been the improvement with the, with the other building, uh, that was done two years ago, and this will, I think, further, uh, improve that building. And as you mentioned, uh, Saturday morning, it'll help that whole corner that is the, that, or the rustic place, uh-
Yeah, in the Dutcher house.
move store, call it, yeah. Uh, that's in there, uh-
There's a hair, another hair salon down there.
Another hair salon, maybe it'll-
Sunflower Baker, you're on the corner.
An improved building there, draw traffic down that way and help, uh, improve that section of the village. Does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments for Sean?
Uh, no, I mean, clearly, clearly, the planning board is the agency, I have to do the seeker before we make any determinations. For me, it's very important, Sean, that we do get our own copies of this, if you can get them to Vivian before our next meeting, so we can look at them. Uh, one of the issues that the board's been pretty, um, attentive to lately is making sure that things don't stand out, that they blend in. It looks to me like that's one of your goals here, but I want to make sure that we have copies of those as part of the record and part of what is being presented to us, so that the variances that we grant are also dependent upon how well we feel things are blending into the characteristics of the surrounding area.
Not a problem.
Okay. All right. I think that's about all we can do tonight. We proved the minutes, we took care of Eastern Hay, and we've done everything you can with, uh, with Five Oak. We'll meet again in-
Do we want to maybe open up a moment for any public questions of Sean? This is the first time he's been here, was that, is that appropriate tonight? If we have a small crowd now, it looks like we lost most of our audience.
Laurie, you have questions?
But, uh, perhaps, I'll, I'll make a motion that we open up, uh, a, a, a moment of public comment for anybody who may have questions or comments about-
Favor?
Aye.
Any comments?
No.
No?
I'll make a motion that we close, close the public comment.
All right, that was, uh, okay, so, uh, I think we'll call it into this meeting. Uh, we'll adjourn until, uh, till June.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, we close the current zoning board appeals meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, it's closed.
I will, uh, get Vivian that copy, uh, to get on the next zoning board meeting, just deal with, talk to Vivian about getting on the schedule.
Yes, yeah.
All right, Kurt will be back for that, so.
Good, all right.
We'll have a chair ready for him.
There we go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.